Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Let me call to order the MERRIMAC Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, June 6th, 2017. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to make sure you sign in on the clipboard in front of me, and please write very clearly because our usual notes and minute takers are not with us today, so we're gonna have to try to make do as best we can from recordings and from Tim's notes and from that clipboard, so please do that. Also, make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear and the recording can pick it up also for the minutes purposes. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting will be June 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room, which is this room. Before we move on, I'm gonna point Paul to a voting position in place of Vincent Russo. And with that, that brings us to item two on our agenda, which is the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the board for the staff? Seeing none, let's move on to the annual meeting and election of officers and review of bylaws for the planning board. Staff has distributed a revision to our bylaws, which essentially changes the bylaw, the name of the document from "bylaws" to "rules of procedure," which seems like a perfectly reasonable change to me. I don't know if anybody else has any other changes.
I don't know if you want me to explain why, but I think I summarized it in the memo. There's actually no reference anywhere in state law to bylaws, and MERRIMAC is actually the first and only community I've worked in that I've actually seen them referred to as bylaws, so I just thought it would be, makes sense to make sure it's consistent with statute, and I'll be proposing the same thing to the zoning board next month.
Makes sense to me. Thank you, Tim, for doing that.
Bob? Did you happen to check the town charter to make sure there's no reference to bylaws in there as well?
I did not check the town charter, no.
Okay. We might want to touch base with that, just either change the charter or verify that it may not say anything, but I think it has some comments about bylaws of committees.
In terms of our business here today, we could certainly vote on these, this change of bylaws/rules of procedure contingent on there being nothing in the charter that would prevent it.
Sure, absolutely.
If that's the will of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We change the bylaws to read, whatever it is.
Rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure. I've recommended by Mr. Thompson, our Community Development Director, on memo dated 20th, May 23, 2017.
Is there a second pro-alester's motion? Paul, you're up. There you go, second by Paul.
That condition upon?
Condition upon checking the town charter, which was amended whenever it was some years ago.
Very good. Motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So we are five tonight, 5-0-0 to deal with that piece of business. The other item on our annual meeting is the election of officers, and so we have a chair and vice chair, and with that in mind, we'll open the floor for nominations for serving those offices for the next year.
I'll make a nomination to keep the chair and vice chair as-is. Both you guys have done a fantastic job in your leadership and be honored to have you serve again, if you will.
Thank you, Mike, and if it's the will of the board, I'd be honored to so serve.
May I also say the same, Mr. Jim?
Does the nomination require a second, or is it just a nomination?
Nomination.
Nomination. Any other nominations from the floor? All in favor of the nomination made by Mike, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I'll abstain. So that is?
I abstain, of course.
3-0-2 to elect officers.
Of course.
Is there any other business for the planning board to consider for its annual meeting?
That's all we had.
Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item four. Hayner Swanson, Inc. and Student Transportation, Inc. as applicants and John T. Zyla as the owner. This is continued review for consideration of final approval of site plan for a school bus operations facility, the parcels located at 534 Daniel Webster Highway and 6 William Street in the C2 general commercial and Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 6D lot 1-1 and 1-2. The agenda item has been continued from our May 2nd, 2017 meeting. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, there were some, several outstanding comments particularly regarding traffic in the Highway Safety Committee, but the last meeting that was continued here tonight, Highway Safety Committee has since met and is recommending that they have input in any proposed changes of the bus scheduling and bus patterns coming out of the William Street driveway, or William Street entrance, which was agreed upon by the Student Transportation, Inc. The one thing that the Highway Safety Committee noted was that because it is a school bus operation, there is some flexibility and ability to manipulate the scheduling and making sure that we have right turns where left turns are problematic, so there's opportunities for routing and scheduling that could help with any particular issues as they arise. Otherwise, the applicant did submit revised plans and information that has addressed the vast majority of comments and issues that were raised both by town staff, other departments, and CLD, our consulting engineer. That includes the traffic study, which was peer-reviewed by CLD and did not have any significant issues. They agreed with the general conclusions that were reached by the applicant, and the recommendations for conditional approval are in the memo from Robert that you have in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Tim. And with that, please introduce yourself again for the record and tell us where we stand with the project.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. With me here tonight is Greg Stinson, Vice President of Operations in New England for Student Transportation. We also have Pat Bailey and Michelle Bancroft with us here tonight. They're the local managers for MERRIMAC's office and can certainly help answer any questions, or specific questions regarding bus routes and flexibility of student transportation to work with the town on those routes. Steve Pernod of Pernod Company, the project's traffic engineer, is here tonight, along with Attorney Michael Klass from Bernstein Sher. We're here tonight seeking final site plan approval for a proposed school bus operation facility to be located at 534 Daniel Webster Highway. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, I'd like to provide a brief update of what's transpired since the May 2nd meeting, address a couple of the outstanding items referenced in the staff report, and then everybody here tonight would be happy to answer any questions you have. So since the May 2nd meeting, based on feedback we received from the board, we performed additional traffic counts and videoing to verify our study results. I think there was a pretty detailed discussion last meeting with the board and Mr. Pernod regarding his study, how he, you know, what times did he measure, and looking at the peak hours of the buses versus the peak hours of Daniel Webster Highway. So we did go back out and recount the traffic, which did verify our results. We also looked at the Flatley Project, which was brought up last meeting regarding the impact of that project on our study. So my testimony is the recounting, the traffic verified our results. The Flatley Project has a negligible effect on our traffic. If you have detailed questions about that, Steve would be happy to answer and go into more detail. Because we looked at the Flatley Project kind of at the 11th hour here, I have a memo for everybody to submit for the record that essentially proves out that the Flatley Project has a negligible effect on our study. We also appeared before the Highway Safety Committee on May 10. Steve did a thorough and detailed review with the traffic study methodology and results similar to what he did for you folks with the flip charts, and we really got into the nitty-gritty of how we came up to with our study. Michelle was also there to discuss, as Tim mentioned, student transportation is willing and able to modify their bus routes to alleviate some of the concerns. Specifically, Tim mentioned limiting the northbound left turns in the AM return for the buses. I know there was a concern there voiced by board members here tonight and also by the Highway Safety Committee. So student transportation is proposing to limit that to five buses. It was 13 before, so essentially those eight buses will be rerouted and returned to the site via a southbound right turn onto William Street. The committee appeared satisfied with the explanations and did not make a recommend, or said that there was no recommendation for off-site improvements, and of course reserving the right to revisit the scheduling and routes with student transportation if needed in the future. This is outlined in Staff Condition Number 6, which is acceptable to student transportation. Also, as Tim mentioned, we made a comprehensive resubmital to address the staff peer review comments. There are three specific items that are highlighted in the staff report that I'd like to talk about here tonight. I think everything else we've addressed to the satisfaction of staff. I want to touch upon, before I get into the staff memo and waivers, I want to touch upon kind of the three main project elements that we talked about last time, traffic, stormwater, and then the impacts to our butters to the north on William Street. So just to reiterate traffic, the bus facility will generate 320 trips, 160 entering, 160 exiting on an average weekday. There's four peak periods for the bus facility, the morning departure, which is 6:00 to 7:00 AM, the morning bus arrival, which is 8:00 to 9:00 AM, the afternoon bus departure, which is about 1:45 to 2:45, and the afternoon bus arrival, which is 3:15 to 4:15. So it's important to note that the bus facility peak periods generally do not coincide with the Daniel Webster Highway AM and PM peak periods, which occur from 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning and then 5:00 to 6:00 PM at night. So given the number of trips in the peak periods not coinciding with the roadway peak periods, we believe this project will have a minimal impact on traffic. The Daniel Webster Highway William Street intersection was also analyzed, and based on this analysis, it was determined that neither a traffic signal nor auxiliary turn lanes are warranted. These findings were supported by the Highway Safety Committee, DPW, and the peer review consultant. The second item I want to talk about is stormwater. So I gave a lengthy presentation before regarding the free and post-development stormwater for the site. I talked about, there's a number of LID treatment practices throughout the site. There's six rain gardens and three infiltration trenches. What's changed since the last time we met was, in the rear of the property along the turnpike, we had a detention basin, so it's a grass infiltration basin. And based on comments we received back from DES alteration of terrain, they asked us that we make that a line stormwater pond, and they've also asked us to add a catch basin just to the west, just behind the Fuel Island area, a catch basin with a hood on it. So essentially, a couple of practices to add to the spill prevention measures on-site. So if there is a spill in the Fuel Island area and it runs off, it will go into that catch basin. It will be hard-piped to the back stormwater pond, where the theory is it can be skimmed off the pond easier than if it was directly into the ground and then you would have a lengthy cleanup there. So it's my understanding from DES and AOT that this is kind of the preferred method of dealing with high-load areas, as they would call it, or the Fuel Island in this case. And as I mentioned last time, the net result is that zero runoff is leaving the site up to and including the 50-year storm event. Third item is minimizing impacts to the abutting residence. So the subject site and the surrounding properties along this stretch are C2 commercial. One of the goals of the project was to provide more green space and better buffering and screening between the current site and the existing residence on William Street to our north. Currently, the view from the abutting residence is a dilapidated garage and a sea of pavement. So we're introducing a number of site-related elements to help reduce the impact of the bus use on-site. So the bus circulation is going to be in a clockwise motion. They will enter on a double-barrel driveway coming in about halfway on William Street. They'll then proceed to the back of the site to park, and then when they leave the site, they'll come in off the new driveway on the end of William Street. So the reason we did this is originally we had just one single entrance there, and we were concerned about headlights flashing into the abutting residence property as buses are coming in and out. So by having them exit the site in the cul-de-sac where it's heavily buffered, you know, we think that that, we think that that was the right thing to do. You can see as you move from west to east towards Daniel Webster Highway, we're saving a big chunk of trees, natural vegetation that will provide a buffer between William Street and the bus lot itself. And then as we move east, we've supplemented areas where there is no natural vegetation with some landscape buffering along William Street. I'll speak specifically to the landscape buffers in a second. Other considerations we made, obviously there's no spillover from any site lighting onto, over the property line specifically along William Street. We've installed, we're showing a stockade fence around the Fuel Island and dumpster pads. And then as I talked about last time, we are improving the drainage situation. There's kind of a localized ponding along William Street in the existing condition. It's flat. There's little to no drainage out there right now, and there is a contribution from our site in the pre-development condition that we're removing and keeping on our site. So any ponding on William Street should be improved as a result of the project. In the staff report, as I mentioned, there were three items that I'd like to touch upon. The first is the Fuel Island or the above-ground storage tank. I provided a pretty detailed explanation last time of the system components and spill prevention measures. All system components have to be designed by a professional engineer, and DES, which is the governing body on these matters in New Hampshire, it requires their review, approval, and permitting. So I'd be happy to go through those items again if the board has further questions, but I think we can rely that the DES design and permitting process will be stringent, and this will be a state-of-the-art facility that meets all local, state, and federal regulations regarding the Fuel Island. The second item referenced in the staff report is Section 10.01.1H. It's a regulation in the landscape section that essentially says that curbing and wheel stops should be provided in all parking areas, abutting landscape strips, to avoid accidental damage to landscaping itself. So as you can see on our plan, all parking spaces that are in and around the building, facing the building, and anywhere around a sidewalk is curved. The parking spaces on the perimeter of the site, so the 12 spaces facing Daniel Webster Highway and the 27 spaces abutting our southerly property line, we have open drainage there. So all that is sheet flowing into the adjacent rain gardens. So in these locations, we do not have curbing and wheel stops. We have provided a two-foot gravel shoulder in all those locations. Essentially, what the gravel shoulder will do is provide an extra two feet of protection between the edge of pavement and the lawn areas. It'll also give the driver a feeling that I am no longer on pavement anymore. I've moved on to a different surface. So most of these spaces that we're talking about, those 39 spaces, abut grass lawn areas, there are a couple instances where there is landscaping nearby, but the nearest planting is set back at least five feet. So for those reasons, we believe we meet the spirit and intent of the regulation, which is to minimize accidental damage of landscape areas. In an abundance of caution, we've prepared an additional waiver request for that item tonight, and I do have that if it is the will of the board.
So I'll let the board kind of discuss that a little bit and figure out where they want to go, but I understand the difference between putting curbing in and how that would affect your drainage, but concrete wheel stops don't block in a continuous fashion, so they wouldn't affect your drainage, would they?
A little bit. A lot of times they're set flush to the pavement, so you would get a little bit of localized erosion, but no, no, it would have a minimal effect.
So given that they'd have a minimal effect, and they're not terribly expensive either, it would seem like it's a close balance when you talk about, should we waive it, or should we just have those put in there? And I would, I fully understand and support what you're saying if we were talking about putting continuous curbing, and then you'd have to do drainage structures to try to get the water out of it into the grass to do the infiltration, but, so anyway, that's the thought that I had on the concrete wheel stops.
If I may, on that particular point, I don't think it's necessary for the board to take up a specific waiver unless you feel it's necessary. Our interpretation, the reason Robert brought this up, was it's in that close proximity of meeting the design intent of making sure you have enough space between the end of the parking space and the landscaping to prevent damage. The rationale, as we understand it from the regulation, was that when you're right up against the landscaped area, you want to have that protection to keep somebody from hitting and damaging the landscape, where in this situation, you've got a separation of at least five feet in most, if not all of those situations. So it's a question of, do they meet the design intent as it is now, or do they need to provide that additional protection?
Thanks, Tim. That kind of crosses over into a related topic that Nelson mentioned to me when I was speaking to him and asked me to bring up because he's not here, and that is, the two-foot gravel area that you have surrounding it, or even some of the reduced size of the landscaped area in front of the building, is, wouldn't it be great if there was more landscaping? And so instead of having a five-foot space to keep cars away, put some concrete and more landscaping, use that five foot of space for some plantings? Or Nelson had some more thoughts about the landscape island in the front, which used to contain the sign and was, used to be much larger in the, exist, as it exists today, and was looking for some feedback from you guys in terms of what more you might think of doing in that front landscape area to keep up the aesthetics of it.
That's the next item on my list, so if I can roll into that.
Sure, please.
We can continue that discussion, so. So condition number eight on the staff report talks about asking us to verify if we meet the landscape buffers of the regulation. We're speaking both to the, our frontage along William Street and also our front door along Daniel Webster Highway. So I would start off by saying the regulations are a bit unclear if buffering is intended to apply across the public way along William Street. However, since we're sensitive to the fact that this residence has been in this location for many years, we are providing a buffer that meets the regulation, as if the two properties were directly adjoining, and that buffer being a Category B buffer types 3 and 4. Type 3 is the proposed landscape, type 4 being the natural buffer along the bus parking area. I'd also like to point again that this is a vast improvement from the existing condition out there right now.
I think it is. Talk to me about some of the details in your Type B buffer. The D I get, the natural landscaping, that's huge, but the plantings that you've got going there, what are you gonna put there and what are they gonna look like? Depth, what have you chosen?
I don't, I will speak to the specific plants in a second. So along that area, there's 15 trees and about 56 shrubs. Some of the shrubs are associated with the landscape, I mean, I'm sorry, with the rain garden, stormwater areas that are located. We have two along those. There is a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. There are some evergreen shrubs, some marbivides that are located in these. Right now, we've got some maple trees, so I'm working east to west here along the first buffer strip that's just north of the building. So we have a couple maple trees there, a King Hawthorn, and then as we move along, we've got a couple honey locust trees, and also a couple white pines then as we get closer to the Fuel Island area, so. The Type B, or Category B Type 3 buffer requires 30 feet. We're providing 30 to 70 feet as you move there. It's 30 feet plus at the building, the next block is about 35 feet, and then it gets up to about 70 feet at the rain garden near the Fuel Island, so.
Okay.
We would fully meet that, that buffer.
Were you proposing white pines? Because white pines aren't a terribly good buffer for virtually anything.
The white pines, I believe, are the few trees just north of the Fuel Island area.
Okay, so they're kind of behind the red ones? Okay, all right, that's fine. Well, behind.
My suggestion, as I've been suggesting for, oh, 20 years as a professional planner, is whenever I see white pine, I usually say white spruce is the better alternative. They're a much more buffering tree that provides foliage at lower levels than a pine would.
I agree with that. I think you guys are willing to consider that.
That's, that's fine. Any white pines or white spruce.
So, and then you said, a large number of shrubs, 30, or how many shrubs did you say?
There's about 56.
56 shrubs along that same area?
Yes. And a lot of those are in the rain garden areas themselves, but they're well within that 30-foot required zone, so.
Okay.
You know, I'd be happy to give the breakdown to staff on.
With the exception of the driveway, where the driveways go into William Street, we were quite satisfied in terms of the amount and nature of what's being proposed within that buffer area to meet the intent of the requirements.
That makes sense. Talk to me about DW Highway in that front area, because although I think that you've got a plan that's proposed with some trees and things that you're going to do, and arguably you're reducing the size of that front lawn area.
Yep. So landscaping along DW Highway is governed by the Streetscape Regulation in the Landscape Section 10.01.3, and essentially says you have to have a landscape strip of at least 10 feet wide. We're providing 20, and a combination of shade trees and ornamental trees at different lengths. If you have a shade tree, one per 50 feet. If you have an ornamental tree, one per 40 feet. The current plan, I believe, meets the regulation by providing a 20-foot-wide landscape strip. We're saving one existing shade tree just south of the site driveway, and then we're proposing an additional five ornamental trees, and those are the winter King Hawthorn. So those, you know, three-inch gallop are eight feet. I will say they're not as mature as some of the trees out there now. I think we're saving the biggest one just south of the site driveway, but by proposing those, we would be, we would be meeting the regulations. In addition to that, we've got two rain gardens located in that buffer area, so there are additional shrubs and plantings and green areas in addition to the, kind of the grass So we receive feedback saying that more plants may be desired in this location. The applicant is certainly willing to work with staff to add some additional low-line plants around the existing sign. So the existing sign is going to remain. If we touch the sign or move the sign, it would need to come back outside a 20-foot zone.
Well, your plans are showing it going away.
There is a sign there.
But the planter bed that it's sitting in is not.
They're removing the planter because the D.
DPW has asked us to take the planter bed, which was a couple feet, a portion of it was a couple feet inside the right-of-way. They've asked us to remove that.
Okay.
They've also asked us to, they were concerned about sightlines, and there are a couple dense evergreen shrubs located along the property line that they've specifically asked us to get rid of. So I would say that we're willing to add some plantings in this area, though I don't think, based on what we heard from DPW and what we know about the sightlines out there, we wouldn't want to introduce any, anything that would cut into that. I think if we kept everything on our property, we would be fine.
Okay. So the sign's staying where it is. You've also got some tenants that seem to like some portable signs, which are not quite in compliance with anything, but seem to be there, but we'll worry about that another I'm trying to think about different ways to try to do some more landscaping up front since there's so much grass that's gonna go away for the new pavement, but I guess it is what it is.
We can work with staff. We can kind of recreate that mulch bed in and around the existing sign, make sure we keep it out of the right-of-way per DPW's request, and add some more low-line plants there. I wouldn't recommend introducing any more trees in that location.
Yeah. Now, the sightlines are important at the, both the driveway and at William Street, so it's important that we don't block any of that with. so it's important that we don't block any of that with additional landscaping.
That makes sense.
It's also tough. Sometimes when you get too many plants in a, in an area with flat, open drainage, those plants can kind of disrupt the flow of water, and you end up with, with ponding in parking lots, and, which is part of the reason why that area is, is kept kind of open lawn, and then again, along the southerly portion of the site, to have some open areas for, for clean drainage and some snow storage.
Okay. So now, along that DW Highway side, the parking spaces in the southerly, that's where you're talking about two feet of gravel off the edge of pavement?
Yes, so two feet of gravel exists anywhere where we don't have curbing.
Any other kind of stop or curbing?
It extends all the way from William Street along DW Highway, back down the southerly parking, all the way to the dumpster pad, that two-foot strip of, of gravel shoulder.
I guess I don't feel too strongly one way or another on those choices.
Yeah, one thing I would say to it is that with their, you know, no de-icing practices, that gives them that flexibility, not having to work around those concrete bollards, so they can really push it, work it, because they're not going to have that ability to, to melt it. And so managing it, brooming it, whatever they need to do without those wheel chocks gives them a lot more flexibility. And then that gravel provides the stability of that, the sediment goes in there versus going into the lawn, and so it provides a good stable design in that regard.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Thanks for pointing that out.
That's a good point.
Okay. Is there anything else, Tom, that you'd like to share with us?
That was it from the staff report and kind of the recap. From there, I'd probably go into the waiver requests.
Before you go into the waiver request, can you distribute the memo you brought that deals with the traffic and the Flatley stuff? Thank you. Is there anything in the memo you want to explain or call our attention to, or go through, or you just want us to receive it?
I'm guessing you're going to have some traffic, specific traffic questions tonight, and so I'd probably defer to Mr. Purnow on those.
I've got the one, and perhaps it's more for Mr. Purnow. Has anybody looked at the effect of, not so much of this, but the related effect of turns from DW Highway into Bedford Road? Because that is, can be a bit of an issue. There's an awful lot of traffic trying to get onto the turnpike to go towards Nashua simply because that is a free, inverted commas, toll booth. That's my only question. When you say it's, it's only 15 extra-trap vehicles...
That, that I think is ultimately the result. If you look at the Flatley traffic study, most, if, all but 15 of those trips that are heading south in the AM are turning Bedford Road and going south on the turnpike.
Yeah, well, I realize that, but that's where also you've got buses turning to go up to Reed's Ferry School, et cetera, et cetera. I just wonder if that's, anybody's looked at it?
For the record, my name is Stephen Purnow with Purnow and Company, and to answer your question, the intersection of Route 3 and Bedford Road was not given to us as one of the study area intersections. We analyzed William Street and then the driveway to the south.
Okay. It's a fair comment. I just, I just asked, because I know that can be a little bit of a bottleneck.
I think it probably would be, but I guess the bus company has got to work out how their routes move in that direction and how that...
That was a studied intersection as part of the Flatley project, but not for this project.
Yeah, and I think the Flatley project basically said it was all right. Am I not right? Am I right?
Yeah.
Well...
So while Tim's looking...
There really are buses going up that way, Tom, whether you like it or not. There are buses there now, it's just where they've come from.
So, well, Tim's looking at some of the stuff in the other traffic report. I did have a question about the plan that resulted from meeting with the Highway Safety Committee, where you had originally proposed having 13 buses return in a northbound direction to turn left into the site, and you changed that to five, so that eight buses will be rerouted in some way to end up going south on DW Highway where they could turn right into the site. I want to understand a little bit more about how you're rerouting those buses, to know that they're not going in somebody's neighborhood and just making a wasted trip down someone's street where it might affect their neighborhood. You know, how are you getting them turned around?
Oops, sorry. I am co-manager of STA, Location in Merrimack, New Hampshire. So what the proposal is, is to have them go down Hillside to Wire Road to Catskill to Bedford, and then take the right turn on to DW.
Okay. Go through the list of roads again?
Hillside, Wire, Catskill, Bedford, DW.
Okay, so Catskill is a residential neighborhood road. I don't know, Wire Road certainly isn't. Sorry.
Where's Catskill?
It goes between Bedford Road and Wire Road.
There's like four houses.
It's the funny route. If you're going down Bedford Road, just before you get to the four-way intersection, you've got a left turn there. That's Catskill.
Tim?
The Bedford Road question from the Flatley traffic study is Bedford Road at Daniel Webster Highway, under all conditions, the signalized intersection operates at a level of Service C during both weekday morning and weekday evening peak hours.
Thank you, sir. So in other words, it doesn't change.
The only reason for asking about the turnaround is obviously is some impact on some people in their residential neighborhoods in the morning, just to have a handful of buses just, you know, just going by just to make a loop through a residential area. If it's possible to consider staying on the arterial and collector roads and not on the neighborhood roads for doing that turnaround, if there's a way to do that, I'd encourage you to think about it.
We could use Lois Lane. I mean, there's no houses on that street.
Yeah, I can't even remember where that one is.
That's right, opposite Catskill, so it connects Wire and Bedford again, but just on the other end of the intersection.
Oh, okay. Understood. If you could, you know, I don't think that it's necessarily of such a critical importance that the planning board should make it some condition of your approval, but be considerate about your neighbors and...
Yeah, however, we can help the neighborhood is definitely something we want to do.
Especially if they all happen to be trying to go at the same time, so it's actually bus after bus, but, you know, just making a loop around town.
Well, that's the other thing we're trying to do, is separate them so that there isn't bus after bus. We're trying to separate the time so that they go, you know, minutes apart.
Okay, that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add, speaking with, with my, if you like, bus driver hat on, to turn out of Bedford Road into Wire Road, you're, it's a, you're going around a hairpin, and that's actually going to be more inconvenience to other road users because the bus will have to swing.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you could do that.
The last thing you want to do ideally in a bus is go around hairpins.
No, I agree. I think going toward Bedford and Wire Road meet is not the answer.
No, it's definitely not.
If there's a way, if there's some, some way to manage the turnaround so that it stays off of people's neighborhood streets. As a matter of fact, I have a friend who lives on Catskill who's probably no doubt texting me right now.
I'd probably pick up their kids.
Could be. So thank you for that bit of explanation.
Thank you.
Tom, is there more that you'd want to present to us, or?
No, I would just move into the waiver requests.
Okay, please go through your waiver requests.
Okay. So I'm going to try to paraphrase a little bit from my letter dated May 24th, 2017. Two of the four waivers we discussed informally last time, and two are new. Waiver request one is regarding parking. So if you remember last time, I was providing dashed future spaces to show that the site can support it. We received some, I guess, pushback from staff saying, well, you're showing them, but you've got them in rain garden areas and your drainage doesn't account for them, so we thought maybe the cleaner way to do it is, is to ask for the waiver and to construct what, what we think we need to construct. And if we need more parking later, then we'll have to come back for reapprovals.
So your waiver request is for five less than the formula calls for?
Eleven less.
Eleven less.
So we are proposing 78 parking spaces, where a minimum of 89 is, is required. So two quick points is that student transportation is going to occupy approximately half of the existing building, and half of the existing building is going to remain with the, the commercial tenants. So this half of the building is about 4,500 square feet. Student transportation is going to be staffing that office with four full-time employees. If you do the, the parking counts by that commercial space, so one per 300 times 4,500 feet, it's about 15 spaces where they only need four for their employees. So there's the 11 spaces that we're short right there.
Is it four, include your mechanics for your maintenance job?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And the other point is that the, the school bus operation, I've read to you the peaks, it's going to be morning and early afternoon. The commercial tenants, karate studio, nail salon, they tend to have a peak parking demand in the late afternoon, early evening hours. So I do think, you know, all this parking along the south part of the building that is reserved for school bus drivers, we're providing one space per school bus of times 55. There's going to be some shared parking spaces there that will overlap between the, the uses on site.
I remember you telling us that you had building the site for a maximum capacity of 55 or 56 school buses, but wasn't your current use like 36 or something like that?
38, I believe.
It's actually 42.
42.
42.
So you, you're not using all of your school bus spaces, at least not in the beginning?
Correct. But we're providing that in the back, so.
Makes sense. Okay.
So, so those would be the reasons for the, for the parking waiver. I can get more detailed if the board wants, but those are kind of the two main points that I have regarding parking.
I don't need more detail than anyone else? Okay. Tell me about your other...
The second request is the sidewalk waiver, so we talked about this last meeting. When we met last time, we were not showing any sidewalk improvements. We've added on Daniel Webster Highway sidewalk, paved sidewalk, that I spoke with DPW about, and they were accepting of it. Again, there's no curbing and drainage on Daniel Webster Highway now, so the sidewalk sits a little bit lower, and the stormwater will run across it, which isn't ideal, but it's a better case than area than burming the sidewalk up and creating puddles on Daniel Webster. So we are, starting from the south, we're connecting into the, the vault sidewalk, which is kind of more of an asphalt...
Recycled asphalt.
Recycled asphalt. And we're providing a five-foot paved path all along our frontage, along with crosswalks at our site driveway, and also a new crosswalk and stop bar at William Street. There's no sidewalk north of our site, but we're providing that crosswalk there anyway to that grass strip. The waiver request is for William Street, so I spoke last time about the, you know, almost 800 feet of, of frontage along William Street. We spoke about the lack of pedestrian connectivity with the highway and the cost to construct sidewalk, curbing drainage all along that stretch, and that's the reason why we're asking for a waiver tonight.
Okay. So it's two.
The third one is a section of the code that requires that all driveway entrances on Daniel Webster Highway be curbed from the edge of the highway to at least the end of the radii at the driveway throat. So we do not have any curbing out there. There's no curbing in proximity either on William Street or Daniel Webster Highway. Again, we have open drainage, so introducing curbing, it would essentially be 45 feet on each side just along the neck of that site driveway would, would concentrate drainage and, and could create an erosion problem. We don't see the benefit to this small stretch of curbing, and thus are asking for a waiver. We do have a two-foot wide gravel shoulder in this area in lieu of curbing.
Thank you, Tom. Tim, can you shed any more light on what's the intent of that regulation requirement?
No.
Appreciate it. It may be intended to join in places where there is curbing and...
That's, best guess I could make would be that it contemplated that DW Highway was going to be curbed from town line to town line, and that obviously hasn't happened.
I'm not upset about that. Other questions or comments about the request for the curb waiver? Please proceed.
Last but not least, we have a waiver request on the building design. The regulation states that you have to have a public entrance facing each public road. We have a, a public entrance, the existing entrance on Daniel Webster Highway. Neither the existing building nor the new addition have a, a public entrance facing William Street. We discussed last time, we don't want the general public going towards the maintenance garage in the back, so we're asking for that waiver tonight.
Understood. Does anybody have any questions or comments about waivers? Tom, is there anything else that you want to present to us? I think that before we vote on waivers, I'd like to open up the public hearing and hear from the public, just in case they have some opinions on matters related to those waivers. And so with that...
Is there any member of the public or butters who wish to weigh in and offer the board some information before we decide what to do?
Got to be careful with the G in this one.
Understood.
Last time I went backwards.
Yeah, let's, don't do that. Settle in and take your time. Be sure to sign in on the clipboard and then introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
I live at 536 Daniel Webster slash 1 William Street, whatever you want to call it. Just, you've all heard my issues with the diesel fumes and things like that. What I would like to address is, you just got through saying that you didn't want to disturb neighborhoods with the buses any more than you had to?
Yes.
I'm a neighborhood, and you know your 320 trips a day that I'm going to have right by my kitchen door. We're all entitled to quiet enjoyment of our property, so I figure that might not be too quiet. We've lived there for 50 years. My husband's family has lived on the property, on the land, longer than that. It all sounds like this is probably going to be a done deal, so I have some requests. One has to do with the drainage, and he said he's working on that. We have a storm drain at the foot of one of, we have a circular driveway, or half-circular driveway.
Okay.
The town put in a storm drain. When they extended that William Street to make it an acceptable road, they put in, it wasn't always like that when we moved there. It was, it was not a town street. It was owned by the Zylers. There was an issue, something about snow removal, whatever. They ended up giving that road to the town, and they extended it out, and they put a storm drain at the end of our driveway, which Mr. Zajak is familiar with. That has a pipe that drains onto the back of our land. It comes to, to meet where that culvert is.
Okay.
So now we have wetland that we did not have before.
Okay, we'll have them talk a little bit.
I would like that taken care of. Because if we ever, if, well, we're not leaving. The next trip we go to is the Veteran Cemetery, but we're not going to go there right away. But if my, if our children decide to sell that property, there's one whole area that they can't do anything with right now because it's wet, because of the culvert and the storm drain.
Okay.
And I'd like to see that taken care of if they're going to do this, if that's possible. The second request that I have, if this does go through, is a 10-foot vinyl fence. Everything they're doing over there, it sounds... Everything they're doing over there sounds wonderful, it's beautiful, but the dust and the noise is still going to come through. So, I would like a ten-foot vinyl round fence from the end, not the, where the culvert starts to the end of our pool fence.
On?
On our side of the road.
On your side of the road?
Right. So, it'll cut down on the noise a little bit.
It will. If I may, that's not something I believe this board could specifically require, but that is something that you could certainly discuss with the applicant. But I don't believe the board could require them to put something on your property.
Okay.
From my perspective, anyway.
Yeah, no, I agree with Tim that there's some limitations on what we can ask them to do for off-site improvements. However, it's not uncommon for applicants in the spirit of trying to get along to entertain some discussion about that, because that probably isn't a huge expense, so. Well, when you're finished and the rest of the public is finished, I'm taking notes on the things that you've said, and we'll have a discussion with them. We wouldn't necessarily get in the middle of negotiating a fence for you or making them do that, but we can at least begin the discussion, and then you guys can deal with that offline if you want to.
Well, I know that they were saying that there was, there were no fumes associated with these buses, diesel fumes. My husband worked in the trucking industry for forty-two years. There is some fumes associated.
They discussed that last time, and there is a bit of a difference.
Right. He's ordered some new buses and all that sort of stuff, but in the meantime, I have asthma, I can't wait for the new buses.
Interesting.
So, I'm thinking that maybe that fence would help keep that down a little bit, too, as well.
You said you had some other concerns, too, that you wanted to request?
Well, that's about all there is right now. You know how I feel about it anyway. I'm not crazy about it. Because the lifestyle that we've enjoyed for the past fifty years is not going to quite be the same. We've always gotten along with everyone that's lived next door. So, if this happens, we'll do our best to do that, too.
Now, I've been out there to take a look around, and do you agree with the applicant when he says that what you got there today isn't so pleasant to look at?
You think?
Well, it's hard to improve, hard not to improve on it.
I'm sorry, we have a stockade fence up there that cuts down a little bit on the site. It's not their fault. It's not their fault. It's just deteriorated over the years.
I think that there's sort of a.
But it's even worse on the other side of the building, trust me.
On the other side of this building?
Yeah.
They're knocking down, yes, Mr. Joe.
So, I think that there's kind of a part A and a part B to what they're proposing. I think you might find that the landscape and the redesign of the site is probably great, it's just the buses, the fact that they're going to have buses on it, that's the part that you don't like so much.
I've had buses in that road before when my sons were in school. They used to come down the street and pick them up and out.
Yeah, it's just one.
But that was a long time ago.
And it was one.
And that was just one, not three-hundred-and-twenty trips.
So, okay. Thank you for your information. I took some notes, and we'll have some discussion with the applicant.
And this, you know, we'll work with them with the snow as far as the wintertime, too, with our driveways getting blocked in, so we can work with them with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carol, can you just point on that?
Can I point?
Yeah, where your catch basin is and where the pipe leads the water to.
He knows where it is.
Can you show it, then?
Sure.
And just confirm it for me, Carol.
That's where the storm drain is, right here at the end of our driveway. And down for your.
Carol, you're not on a microphone, so it's kind of hard to.
Just point.
Just point. Yeah. You're good. Thank you.
He can do it.
Tom will talk about it for us.
He knows where it is.
Okay.
Okay, so.
No other questions? Thank you so much. It's not like that.
It's one of my colleagues who was taken to hospital.
Oh, everything's all right. When you're ready.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Mrs. Footer brought up one of the issues I was going to talk about, so.
Hang on a second before you dive right in. Introduce yourself.
I did. Bob Larue, Backriver Road, Marmack. One of the issues, I only have three little items to talk about. Mrs. Footer discussed one of them, that was air quality. I've heard several numbers on the number of buses are going to be there, so I'm not going to even try to guess which one is correct. So, my question to you is, we have to agree to be a concentration of school buses, all diesels down there. I also concede the fact that some of them are going to be more than nice. So, my question to you folks is, did the EPA do an air quality assessment in that area?
No. No, they didn't.
Okay. That's an issue that should be looked at. Furthermore, I think you should require an air quality monitoring station down there. Now, why do we need this? This would protect both the tenants and the abutters. Because we know the Footers are there, we know Mrs. Footer has a medical problem, it's been stated publicly. We don't know what's going to happen after they've moved on, who's going to live there. You could wind up into a situation where the new tenants over there could all of a sudden develop medical problems, and they're going back and forth, finger pointing. We have a situation like that right now in Marmack with our water supply. We have a problem, it's a finger pointing who's responsible. So, I really believe by having an EPA assessment done now and their evaluation, or, you know, say what it's going to be like after, would be helpful to the town. And also, an air quality monitoring station would protect all parties from future litigation. So, this is not only for the abutters, but it's also for the tenants who'd be there. The company that's applying now is top of the line. I'm not disputing that at all. But we have to think of the future. If they move on, who's going to take over? Are they going to be as conscientious as these people are? We don't know. We can't predict. This is why we have to take the necessary steps to protect ourselves and the community right now. So, I want you to think about that. Another issue that I brought up, or I want to bring up, is the fuel delivery during normal business hours. Can somebody tell me what that is?
What is?
Fuel deliveries will be made during normal business hours. It is not specified.
But they do have operating hours.
Excuse me. It's not specified.
I think that Mike disagrees with you.
Nope.
It is specified.
Just hear me out, please. Normal business hours. It's not specified, subject to interpretation, subject to problems. I have not seen anything where it says normal business hours and specify a time. The reason I say that, if you say normal business hours, whose normal business hours are you talking about?
So, can I interrupt you? You're waxing eloquent on a subject which is covered. It says the hours for dumpsters, pickup, and fuel deliveries shall be between nine AM and five PM, Monday through Friday. But I would point out, as somebody who's been involved with the bus industry for some time, they're not going to have these to take in place when the buses are moving, so you could assume it's either going to be after nine o'clock in the morning, before one o'clock, because that's when the buses start going out again, and after four-thirty to five, because they won't want the tanker in the way when the bus is there. So, I think you can assume pretty well that it'll be between the hours of about nine o'clock and one o'clock.
Okay, so, are you telling me on the record that the fuel delivery, trash pickup, and everything else that has to be done down there by outside vendors will be done between eight AM and five PM?
Yes, it says so in the plans.
Okay.
Nine, it says nine to five.
Nine to five, that's fine. I was not aware of that, I was just told.
It doesn't say everything else.
Isn't it dumpsters as well?
Dumpsters and fuel. You said, you added the line, everything else.
Well, that's the only things that get delivered, really.
And other vendors, yeah, okay.
Not other vendors.
Because every piece of information I ever had was during normal business hours, and I didn't have the numbers.
No, that's fine. It's fine.
Happy to educate. Okay, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. That's why I'm asking questions.
Good.
The other thing, too, is peace and quiet. You have, whatever number of school buses are going to be leaving in the morning, I think, and some of you will correct me if I'm wrong, these buses have backup alarms. You get these buses moving around at five-thirty to six o'clock in the morning, and you're a neighbor during the summer when the windows are open, and you got these backup alarms going off?
Why would you have backup alarms in the morning?
School buses don't go in the summer.
The buses are all backed into their spots, they're going to pull out forward in the morning.
They should.
Well, they can't back up, there's nowhere to go.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm raising the issue.
No, it's a good point.
I'm raising the issue, because if somebody will say, well, because they automatically go in reverse, listen, I was in the business for forty years, and that can easily be taken care of. So, my concern is with the abutters. I don't, you know, I personally wouldn't want to be waking up at five-thirty, six o'clock in the morning by, you know, X amount of school buses being thrown in reverse and alarms going off. So, that's a concern I had, and I'm bringing it to your attention.
Good.
And that's the intent of obviously these public hearings. So, the biggest issue to me right now is the air quality down there. So, if you want to.
Mr. Jim, could I point out to the gentleman that the amount of traffic going past Daniel Webster Highway is quite considerable? And it would be my guess that in most cases, the vehicle, some of the vehicles going down the Daniel Webster Highway are going to be no, not as efficient in their fumes control as buses. So, you're going to get fumes on Daniel Webster Highway, whether it comes from school buses, it comes from everybody and his uncle driving their cars and trucks up and down that road. I don't see how you can specifically say you want a monitoring station there and not have it down by the Town Hall Junction down here, because the amount of congestion of traffic sitting there is probably far worse than outside Williams Street. I mean, I agree with you, what you're concerned, you're concerned about the effect of fumes on the community, but it's everywhere.
Well, the, in answer to your concern, the traffic on Route Three is what, a thousand or better feet more from their house, whereas the buses, whatever the distance is.
It's nowhere near a thousand feet.
No, Williams Street's eight-hundred feet long, their house is in the middle, so they're four-hundred feet from DW Highway and four-hundred feet from the turnpike.
Okay, so you have quite an airspace between Route Three and their house for that fumes to dissipate, whereas the buses are all concentrated right there, almost a bunny to their house.
Yes, sir, but they're not running there. They start the buses.
They start the buses, and those buses idle.
The buses are not allowed, if you read the regulations, and these are federal regulations, you're not allowed to have buses idling for many more minutes.
That's right.
And they will be idling, and they're gone. I can try to find a piece of paper, because I know I've put it somewhere.
They're allowed to idle five minutes each.
Depending on the outside.
So, if you've got forty buses times five minutes, how much idling is that? So, the issue is there, and I think it should be looked at.
All right.
We can stand here and debate the specifics, but the issue is still there. The EPA should take a look at this to see if these diesel fumes are going to have an impact, and if so, that should be addressed before the permit is issued.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for Mr. Larue?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board some Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Tom, you guys want to come back up forward?
Again, for the record, Tom Zajak with Heiner Swanson. May take a couple of us to answer some of the questions that were brought up.
Sure. Can you first deal with the drain situation and what's going on with that pipe? I think that you told us about that last time, and, but I don't remember the details of your answer. I apologize for that.
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. So, there is a leaching catch basin that's located in this, at the foot of the driveway. Williams Street is very flat now. I don't know when it was installed, but clearly it was installed to relieve a ponding problem. And what they did is they ran a four-inch PVC line that follows the driveway here, and there's a culvert located here. It's low on both sides. I think there's kind of a flat wooded drainage area that generally makes its way, you know, down to this wetland and then across to Babusick Brook where all of our site drainage goes. So, there is a very flat culvert here. I've been out there in a couple of different rain events, there is localized ponding, there is a little bit of water in this culvert, but it's a ditch. Our wetland scientists looked at the culvert on our side and on their side, because their buffer would affect us, and there were no jurisdictional wetlands there. So, my testimony is, yes, it appears there's a localized ponding problem on Williams Street, has to do with the crown of the, you know, no crown in the road and just the condition of that road. There's portions of our existing site, all this pavement that drains out there now, right to their driveway, and we're removing all that from the watershed. So, they should see a significant improvement in their drainage in that area.
Now, the drainage to the culvert is going west, towards the Babusick Brook.
The culvert is short, it's just right here, it's right at the neck.
Okay.
And it just runs for maybe ten feet on each side, and there's a low point on each side.
Okay.
There's no real outflow from it. I don't think there's much of a drainage area getting there.
It's not doing much of anything? Okay.
Yeah, I think more of the ponding is in Williams Street itself, just because it's flat and the pavement's, you know, not draining well.
And are you saying that is going to be improved by what you're doing?
It is going to be improved significantly by what we're doing. We're removing pavement that drains out to this area.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Tom.
So, is there any change to that culvert at the neck of the?
We're not proposing any changes. DPW asked us to provide an easement on our side of the property for future maintenance, which we agreed to.
So, that culvert doesn't fill with water and cause any difficulty for your buses getting in and out of Williams Street there?
No, I've been out there in a couple of different rain events, and it's got plenty of storage, got good sandy soils, it just goes right into the ground once it stops raining.
Okay, thank you.
So, the second comment we heard was this request from the neighbor that you guys consider some fencing, and as Tim mentioned, I think that's beyond our jurisdiction to ask you to install fencing on an abutting property owner's land. However, if you guys are willing to entertain that conversation with them, I encourage you to do that, and see if there's anything that you can do, that you're willing to do that makes some sense. It is only in the spirit of being neighborly and that, I don't know, maybe good fences make good neighbors or something, but if you can diffuse some of the objections that you have from the neighbors with something like that, and it's reasonable to do so, a lot of times it's worth thinking about. Talk a little bit about the bus fumes and the exhaust. I know that you had mentioned last time that you've got some modern buses with the better conditions with respect to the exhaust, and tell me more about that.
Sure. Yeah, again, Greg Stinson with Student Transportation of America. Our fleet is one-hundred percent diesel. That fleet is one-hundred percent, again, equipped with clean diesel technology. Majority of it, majority of the fleet, ninety percent plus percent of the fleet are 2012 models, which are equipped with EGR technology, exhaust gas recirculation technology, with diesel particulate filters on the vehicles. We have very strict anti-idling policies, as Alistair mentioned, and, you know, we actually have GPS equipped on the vehicles, which provides reports. We get, the managers get excess idling reports. If something idles more than five minutes, shows up on a report. We follow up and find out what happened, why was the vehicle running, make sure it was, you know, make sure it's managed from that perspective. Additionally, you know, our drivers are trained, you know, with fuel-efficient driving practices, again, in the spirit of, you know, of the best fuel miles-per-gallon practices, as well as managing excessive idling, you know, they're trained on a regular basis. Again, these vehicles are vehicles that go into the school zones every day. So, as a good provider, you know, we want to make sure those vehicles aren't having impacts in school zones. These are, again, clean diesel technology buses. We do have some new buses ordered as well with the same technology. Again, this is all regulated and approved by EPA, so these are EPA-approved diesel buses.
Okay, thank you for that. When you go into the school zones, how many buses would arrive at a school at one time on a typical day?
Well, again, it would depend on the actual school, and Michelle would certainly be better at answering that question, but in terms of, you know, again, depending on which school, elementary or high school, and the staging of them, I mean, I would say at one time at the school zone could be up to eight or ten buses loading.
And I know that you guys do some, some sort of bus activity gathers around Bishop Field around. around the middle school. I guess it's probably just sorting out the schedules between one school's drop-offs and pickups and the next school's drop-offs and pickups. But I drive by there, I don't know how many buses are in the lot, but do you have a sense how many that are gathered there in the morning around 7:45, 8:00?
Actually, if I could defer that to Michelle Bancroft. Michelle, come on in.
Michelle Bancroft, in the morning, they gather there is about maybe eighteen to twenty buses.
Okay.
And then some of them go down to Mastercola and gather over at that tennis court, which may not be an option much longer.
Life will change. Are those buses running, or are they turned off?
No, they have to shut down.
Okay.
And I'm usually driving with them, so they will shut down.
So on a winter morning when they're dealing with getting the snow off the buses, are the buses running during that period of time?
No, they are pulled up and shut down, and then they do every other bus, and then park them back again, and then the plow comes.
Okay, so the buses aren't left running on those mornings either?
No.
Okay. What's the earliest you have buses leaving your site?
About 6:15.
Okay. And the latest for the last one to leave the site in the morning?
About 7:30.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions by the board for this? Yep, okay. Thank you, Michelle. Tom, were there other comments by the public that you'd want to address or comment on?
I think the fueling, delivery, dumpster pickup was, was covered. There is a note on the plan. I'm not an air quality expert, but certainly, from my perspective, that this is the reason why we provide these buffers. We've got a natural wooded buffer between the parking lot and, and William Street, and we're providing some, you know, fencing around the Fuel Island, landscaping in between. They have a fence on their property, so I would say that, that, that for all those reasons, you know, we're, we're trying to be good neighbors to address some of those environmental factors that, that we spoke about. I do think that one of the board members' points about the turnpike and the highway being in close proximity, I, I, I don't think that the testing and monitoring required would be in character for a site like this compared with its location. What else?
I appreciate your willingness to discuss and think about and answer questions about how your buses run and do all those kinds of things. I think that air quality monitoring is beyond our jurisdiction as well, but I'm glad to have the conversation with the public and hear the answers from you to try to address those things, even though we don't have any regula, anything in our regulations that would give us a foundation to regulate air quality.
And I'll speak for Greg and say that, you know, we're willing to work with, with the butters. I know we've, you know, we tried to reach out to them after the zoning meeting. I don't think we'll be able to install a ten-foot fence without going to the zoning board for variance there.
Six would be as high as you'd be able to go without it becoming a structure. Once you're above six feet, it's considered a structure and subject to setback requirements.
But certainly, we can have that conversation.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for providing a whole lot of details. One of the things that I want to add, and we didn't really talk too much about traffic with the butters offering that, although I think that they probably expressed a lot of that the first time, is since, since the last time we met, which was the first couple of days of May, each morning as I've driven by, which has been between 6:30 and 8:30 on the days when I'm on my way to work, I've made a point of taking a look as I pass that site, and what's the traffic like at that Dunkin' Donuts red light, and as you go in front of Vault, and then off to the site, and then on, past Shaw's. And on each morning, at any of those times, there were certainly some cars around coming and going, but there was also very clearly not very long spans of time before there was a big enough gap in the traffic that I don't think that the buses would have any difficulty either getting out of William Street or getting back into William Street. I made a point, and I was even taking notes of the times that I was going by there, to see that, and I didn't expect that over the course of the whole month, there would be zero times when there was traffic backed up in front of the site when I went by there. But that was the case. I never saw an occasion where you would wait more than a few seconds for, you know, four or five cars would pass, and then there'd be a span of a thousand feet before there was another car. I think that light in front of Shaw's kind of regulates that southbound traffic and makes it, you know, causes it to make some gaps right there for you. So that gave me a lot of comfort in terms of the traffic coming and going from your site. I'm pretty confident that you're not gonna have the kinds of problems that I was concerned about the last time you were here. I don't know if anybody else had any other observations. I also said the last time you were here that I was gonna go and see what your site on Star Drive looks like in the morning as the buses are coming out, but because when I was going by this new site, there was really no occasion where there was gonna be, no occasion that I saw where there was gonna be any difficulty getting buses out of there, even if twenty of them tried to go out at once, I didn't go down to look at Star Drive to see at what frequency they come out. I was really relieved to see that. I was surprised. I was really, in my mind, I had, you know, remembered seeing days where there's traffic, and as I took a closer look, the places where there is traffic is, you know, closer to Babusik Lake Road, closer to Bedford Road, north of Bedford Road, there's a lot of traffic that stacks up there behind that red light trying to get onto Bedford Road and onto the turnpike. But you've got a real unique spot there that, for whatever reason, those couple of lights really filter it out. Not very far to the north or south, it's a different story, but anyway, that's my, my own observation from between meetings is I'm really pretty comfortable with your traffic situation now.
Mr. Chairman, could I also point out that in his absence, Mr. Disco did say exactly the same thing to me. He actually made the effort of sitting there and studying the traffic, and he would echo your comments were he'd be here to say so.
I guess, anecdotally, it's interesting to observe that, but you've pointed out in the past, Alistair, the length of time it takes to get a bus going to make a left turn if they've stopped there because of traffic. How much space do they need before they can take off and?
Well, normally, speaking as a bus driver, I wouldn't pull out unless I, I've probably got twenty to thirty feet clear from the vehicle coming towards me.
Twenty to thirty feet?
Good, a good thirty, the length of a bus, I would, I would pull out, as long as you can put your foot, if you put your foot down.
In the northbound lane trying to turn into Williams.
Oh.
Turning across the?
Turning across, even less than that. I mean, I would, if you, if you're trying to turn into William Street from Daniel Webster Highway, fifteen feet, twenty foot, and I'd pull a, put a, pull a bus across, assuming, of course, that the citizens are all obeying the town's speed limit. If they're doing sixty mile an hour, no, I'd probably flinch, but in principle, you can get, you only need a space of about twenty foot between vehicles to pull a bus in.
They must be going pretty slow at that point, because twenty feet, that's, that doesn't sound like, doesn't sound like what you said when we were talking about the middle school, but.
Ah, well, that would rather talk about a, I think you're comparing.
When you're coming out of that stop sign onto Madeline Bennett, you were suggesting that it took quite a lot of space.
Yeah, I thought I had like two hundred feet, yeah.
Yeah, there, there you'd want a lot more space, but just one bus pulling in, one bus pulling in, not a stiff string of buses.
Well, I mean, we've got five potentially that are gonna be keyed up there.
Yeah, but they're not gonna be coming one, 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 but they don't, well, I don't think they will. That's my opinion. I mean, I, I do it every day on, the roads in Hollis, and I can assure you, if I waited two hundred feet, we'd, we'd still be at the upper elementary school now.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the anecdotal observations that Chairman Best and Member Disco had was really reinforced also by the peer review that our consultant looked through in detail the applicant study, and did not find any fault or errors in their assessment of the situation, and essentially agreed with the final outcome of their report, that it will work given the peak times of the bus being off-peak from the traffic peak for DW Highway.
And I can say that although the buses would have been leaving the site maybe at the earliest time that I was there, but probably earlier than when I was there, when I was there was the peak rush hour traffic time, and there was gaps in the roads where the buses could have been driven in and out of the site in that seven fifteen to eight fifteen timeframe, or seven to eight, or whatever that timeframe is. It's really, it was really eye-opening to me, the difference between that little neck of the woods there and over by Bedford Road when you get on the north side of that red light.
That's really bad.
Yeah. And I know that we have those occasions where there's some incidents on the turnpike, and that changes the, the game. And as it happens, it seemed like this morning was one of those, where the traffic on DW Highway backed up, but it was still not at William Street. It was further down. It was down by Bedford Road and north of Bedford Road, practically all the way to the Ray Wazoric Airport entrance thing. People were streaming south, but.
I must have beat it this morning, actually, I didn't have any of that.
So, anyway, other comments or questions by members of the board?
Mike? So just going back to some of the items related to the Fuel Island, you know, when the zoning board approved it, I certainly wasn't a fan of it, but, you know, you guys have done a good job at, at, you know, engineering some good controls in place. With your SPPC plan, you will be required to, you know, take security measures, prevent vandalism, and then just have good practices that prevent the drips, the spills, and then the maintenance. And I looked at Tim to see if this is possible, but could we reference those requirements? So make it practice to be incorporated by reference to this plan? Because there are some very specific items that will be, will hold them responsible for cleaning up spills immediately, not leaving the kitty litter that, you know, there on the pad versus, and the reason why I bring this, because alternatively, I would have liked to have seen an oil-water separator as your control rather than a line pond. But I'm willing to accept the SPPC plan if we can have some sort of connection to it.
It's certainly, in this circumstance, DES is generally the governing authority on this, the town doesn't have its own specific requirements. I wouldn't have an issue with adding a general condition of approval that the applicant to comply with the requirements of the DES permitting process, however that plays out. The permits are always part and parcel of our approvals anyway. If you wanted to go beyond that and add that additional language of general conditions, I don't see that as a particular issue.
Yeah, so that's what I would prefer. This way, if there's any changes in the site, either ownership or what have you, it always ties back to those required practices for control of drip spills and maintenance. And then, do you have a plan with regards to how you're gonna prevent accidental use of the pump at night, you know, vandalism, and as well as just stealing fuel? Do you have a locking mechanism or some other way to do that?
Yes, we would, again, it's a fenced unit, so we would have locks on the dispensers themselves, and we also power them down. We put them on timers so that there's no power to the pump, so, you know, there's no access to them.
Great, great, thank you. Yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Other members of the board have comments?
Could one also, just add one other thing, which is a practice, I think is a good idea, is when the bus is being filled, you have a sort of handheld drip tray underneath the bus, so then in the event that somebody, you know, I know, but all vehicles should stop the pump, blow back and stop the pump, and in the event that somebody spills it, you've got a catch tray under, the fueler puts by the fuel line, where the fuel tank is on the bus, to catch any drips or anything that comes down.
Absolutely, no, that's a good suggestion. I got it, I got it down. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I know one of the things that we talked about before was having the fuel station design plan submitted as a condition before we would sign the plans for you, and I know you haven't fully designed that yet because you're still working with DES, but once you've got it fully designed, can you submit the plan, a copy of the plan to us?
No, but I, we, I don't have any, any.
I was just asking what the timing was to prepare. I know I've seen other projects in other towns where construction has started as they're still designing, finalizing the design and permitting these, these Fuel Islands.
Tim, what's the best way to work through that?
In terms of, I don't know that we'd be able to make it a condition for permit, but perhaps condition prior to occupancy.
Prior to occupancy? I think that'd be fine.
Certainly, minimally.
Yeah, if you don't have it designed by the time you're occupying it, you have a different.
You're out of luck.
Yeah. And I could, I will point that they'll need to register it with the state, and part of that process requires them to have a plan, has the spill plan, and they have to submit that as part of that.
In, in practice, the copies of those permits and those plans are on file with the building department, regardless of any condition that you'd put on the plan.
Okay, perfect. So what's the rule of the board with respect to the four waivers that the applicant requested?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we grant all four waivers as block, as a block.
Based on what rationale?
On the basis that, oh, here we go, thank you, that specific circumstances, circumstances relative to the subdivision and the conditions allowed indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike, motion and second to grant all four waivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? It's five zero zero to grant the waivers. Does the board have any other discussion with the applicant? Seeing none, is the board prepared to take action on the proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion, make a motion that we grant final approval of the site plan for school bus operations facility on 534 Daniel Webster Highway and 6 William Street, along with all the conditions and the memos that have come from both Mr. Thompson and Mr. Bob.
Price.
Yeah, Bob Price, yes.
With the addition of the permit general condition that Mike discussed.
Yes, of course, please, thank you.
Very good. Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
A second.
Tim, did we add any other conditions today other than the one that?
Other than the one, Mike? No.
Okay. Tom?
I just want to amplify for a minute. We got this letter from Stephen Miller suggesting that we should be looking at expanding DW Highway in order to make turn lanes and things like that, and amplify that the Highway Safety Committee deemed that not important or not necessary for this particular use, if I understand the reports I'm hearing correctly.
If I, I neglected, that probably should be summarized for the record, Mr. Chairman, that letter.
Okay, let's do that. That should have been dealt with in the public hearing, so let me do that now. This is a letter dated June 6, 2017, addressed to the Mayor Mac Planning Board from Stephen Miller of 42 Belmont Drive, and it's subject to reference to this application. The zoning requirements for this proposed school bus storage maintenance facility have been met, and I expect an approval as early as today. The real issue is whether the applicant finagled approval without integral off-site improvements. When I hear comments like, "We don't need these improvements," I interpret their position meaning they don't want to pay for them. As long as the bill is small and that they have no problem satisfying any conditions. The letter goes on to describe some, some statistics drawn from the traffic study, and presents the argument that that would present some heavy traffic that would be affected by the school buses, speaking specifically to southbound school buses turning onto William Street, unable to make the right turn, and northbound, let's see, looking for, for a right turn lane leading into William Street from the southbound direction. The northbound school buses making a left turn would have a difficult time doing so according to the information in the letter, unless they did so in a time like Sunday morning when there was no traffic, suggesting that the traffic would back up to Front Street, creating congestion at the light for the Commons and Dunkin' Donuts. And the, the letter writer suggests that there's some utility poles that could be moved to add another lane to go around the school buses turning left before and after William Street. Suggests that the improvements are minimal to alleviate more gridlock and deal with the traffic that results from not only the buses but the employees. And so the entire letter should be included in the public record. It is so summarized, and as Tom mentioned, those suggestions by the writer of the letter were not supported by the results from the traffic, Highway Traffic Safety Committee.
Nor the consult, nor our peer review consultant.
Nor our own peer review consultant. Thank you for that. Thank you for the reminder, Tom.
Okay.
Thank you for the suggestion, Tim, to do that. Are there other comments or discussion items? Tom?
I was gonna ask about your, your comment that you would limit turns, northbound turns to five buses during the AM. I first read it as period, but it says the, the bus arrival peak period, so you're not talking about just during the peak period of the highway, but actually that entire time when the buses are returning.
As the buses are returning.
So only five buses total?
Yeah, there were thirteen before that were coming that way, and we're gonna reroute eight, so.
My fear when I read that is you were just gonna push them outside of the, the peak period, which would make an extended peak period of, you know, another eight buses. Anyway, I think that cleared that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Other comments or questions? So the motion is to grant conditional final approval subsequent to the conditions in the memo, and as discussed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstaining? It is a vote of four to one to zero with Paul opposed. So you have your conditional final approval. You'll get the notice from Tim as to what the requirements are in order to get your plans done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks to Tim, Jillian, and Robert as well for the help with this project.
Well, I would also like to say, and I think we said it last time, Tom, that still remains one of the best presentations I have heard in the twelve years I've sat here.
You did a good job covering the details.
Thanks, you're efforts, guys. Isn't that saying something, because Jim's boss has been a part of this. Jim's boss has been a part of this.
Jim from Haters, awesome. Yeah, Jim does good presentations, too.
He does, he's very good.
Gordon's, Gordon's next.
If I might, I still say it's better than anything, Jim. If I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, before we get to item five on the agenda, perhaps we take up item six, so that Mr. McCabe can leave?
Yes, let's do that. Thank you for that suggestion, Tim. Item six on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. You will have noted that you received in your packet a letter to the planning board from the Agricultural Commission discussing.
Could we, could we ask nicely that other people have their discussions outside the meeting room, please?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, from the Agricultural Commission, discussing the potential purchase of a lighted sign for use in drawing attention to the farmer's market, both in the summertime at the Vault Storage Site, as well as at the wintertime at the O'Leary Center. And I've taken a look at the letter and had a discussion with Alistair and Nelson about it, and then I spoke with Bob, and I think that there's sort of an A and a B to the process here. I think that the A is that the Agricultural Commission is exempt from planning board review and can proceed with their sign as they see fit, but also, the B part is that Bob has been willing to have a discussion with us in the hopes that any concerns that we have might be able to be addressed in a cooperative way and come up with a solution that.
There is slightly more to the exempt part, though.
Okay, please.
This is a, what's considered a governmental use of land, which falls under RSA 67454. Under that statute, the planning board has the option of requiring a public hearing to go over what would the normally applicable regulations be for a project like this, any governmental project, town, school district, state, however, and then issue non-binding recommendations to the applicant. The planning board could also waive that requirement for having that public hearing and move, and allow the project to move forward. Essentially, that's the decision that we need from the board tonight, is, do you want to have a public hearing under RSA 67454 for non-binding feedback, or are you comfortable enough to let them move forward without that?
Okay. Thank you for that explanation, Tim. The reason, I think, for some added discussion, at least in my point of view, is I support the farmer's market, and I support their effort to do what they can to draw some attention to it, and I think that it's a great part of the community that has some real value to us. I just, the particular models of signs that they've been looking at for proposals seem to be more of traffic control types rather than commercial signs or business signs related, and so it was really merely aesthetics that sort of had me reaching out to Bob to talk more about what they'd have, and Bob's immediate response is, hey, can I come to your meeting and talk about it? So I said, sure, let's come on down. So here we are. Tell me more about what's going on at the farmer's market, what you're trying to accomplish, and see if we can maybe help out.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me a few minutes. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Bob McCabe, I'm the Chair of the Merrimack Agricultural Commission. We've been doing this for nine or ten years now, and we're about ready to turn on the summer farmer's market, F 526 D W Highway, which is Vault Storage Systems. In the past, we have a semi-portable plywood sign hanging under the old quote-unquote xylophone sign, advertising the market Wednesday afternoons, and usually on that Wednesday market day, I will go out early in the morning and put a couple more two-by-four plywood signs on the grass meridian on the edge of the road to attract more customer for the vendors. Last year, we started with over thirty vendors. We had hoped for three to five hundred participants every Wednesday afternoon. At a minimum, we always had three hundred. The farmers and/or vendors are always asking for more customer participation, and I can't blame them, they're trying to make a living. So I'm here to ask, out of courtesy to the board, out of courtesy to town and community development, how do we do it properly? How do we do it right? Our thought was to purchase a used signboard, place it Wednesday morning, lit, farmer's market, three to six, on three little lines, probably a solar unit, not a blinky sign of any kind, just a solid partial three lines to attract as much attention as we possibly could. Because even though D W Highway's thirty, forty miles an hour, they do zip by, and the attention span is short and limited, and we're just trying to slow them down, read the sign, if they have a need, please come in and see us. It's a temporary basis, we have eighteen Wednesdays for the summer market at Vault. In the wintertime, the other Wednesdays are used at the O'Leary Center, and that placement has not been precisely positioned yet. In my conversation with the chairman this morning, we could ask the town government to place it on the town hall parking lot, perhaps, and just point it toward church to the O'Leary Center for the winter market. The winter market is really stressed. It needs more attention, it needs more customer participation. So we have the money to buy a sign at an auction at a used price. We'd like the grace of the board to work with us or offer their feedback, and that's why I'm here, really. Other questions I'm going to answer?
Well, let's just kind of have a discussion together, and I don't know if it's questions and answers, let's just talk it through. I, my first comment is probably one that you've heard a hundred times, and there's probably a million reasons why it is what it is, but I haven't been to the farmer's market in the years that you've been doing it because I work in Concord, and if I leave my office at five, I might get by here by a few minutes before six as things are winding down. And so those hours are really, really tough for me. I would have to take time off of work to go to the farmer's market, and it just hasn't been something that I could, could or have done. If it was open till seven, or so, I know some towns do them on Saturdays, that could make all the difference in terms of my ability, my personal ability to go there. I know that, you know, in a town of twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand people, however many we are this week, that three or four hundred people ought to be able to get to, you know, farmer's market like that.
Ideally.
In a crowd. But those hours are really tough for me, they're really, and I know that from, from the people that are selling stuff, they're, they'd like to work during the week and not on the weekends, too. But that's, one of the things that I could offer in terms of crowds and getting people there is to take a look at getting some hours outside of the nine to five. And I know you got one hour outside of nine to five, but it's not quite enough for me to get there.
There are other markets locally, Milford hits Saturday, Nashville hits Sunday. It would be a conflict to have those vendor, our vendors change the day of the week. They also, half of them come from working farms. They prepare four or five hours ahead each Wednesday to fill their vans or trucks with produce and/or products that they're selling. They still have to go home, take care of the animals, and take care of the farm. They can't be there day and night. So we give it the best three hours we can give it, and that's pretty much set in stone, I think. I know you can't, not everybody can make it, but there are other people that do grocery shopping in the family, and if they wanted to, they want to see fresh produce and other product, they're more than welcome to come see us.
I, I get that. We end up going very early on the weekend mornings to try to get it done before the crowds get to the grocery store, but that's a difficult challenge. Okay, so let's switch, switch over to talking about signage and access and all of those kinds of things. So the, the lighted signs that are on trailers that are painted orange and all of that, they tend to tell a driver that there's a construction or an obstacle or some road hazard up ahead of me, and it could be distracting to use a sign like that for commercial purposes, I think that's what I'm.
Or you're going too fast.
Yeah, it might tell you you're going too fast. And so.
People get arrested.
Yeah. So, I mean, I have no objection to the concept of a portable sign, I just want to make sure it isn't something that would be distracted or confused for some traffic control type sign, and also, the more and the better that it can fit into the character of the neighborhood, and I know the character of the neighborhood shifts from building to building, but, you know, those trailers just aren't the best, most aesthetically appealing kind of a sign in the world, and I know that the portable plywood ones that you have are probably more in line with what I was thinking is suitable for that kind of use, but if that's not getting it done for you, I don't know that, you know, the bigger ones of those or more ones of those is the answer.
A couple of years ago, we borrowed from Highway their sign, and it was an opening day, and it was really a good result from it. But we couldn't get it back again because their demand, the bridges were being rebuilt, so on and so forth, just couldn't get it back. We tried the plywood signs, we're still trying the plywood signs, and we're going to, we're going to open next Wednesday, and we'll have them up again, you know, but I'm just trying to pull more traffic in, and it's not going to blink, it's just going to be three short lines, like you said, farmer's market Wednesday, three to six. It won't blink, it won't be a distraction, it will be an eye catcher because it's bigger, but it's only going to be there eight hours on a Wednesday at the most, and it'll go home with us. It will not be there all week. We have permission from the Morgan family, they're behind us. We've been good tenants with them, they've had great landlords.
They seem to have a good connection with the community.
And I started downstairs at Tim's apartment to ask the right questions, you know.
No, you did, no question about that, and I appreciate you coming here and trying to figure out some solutions to things. Separate from signage, I assume you guys are taking advantage of whatever you can to get the word out on Merrimack TV?
There's been a post out there.
Yeah, I know, I've seen you do that. Also, the police department and N Y A and the Parks and Rec have in various places their own signs. Are they able to share messages with you?
Kristen did that the other day out of Town Manager's Office, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they went through the system.
Does that help or no?
We don't know, I mean, we never polled it, it's something, it's something more than anything. I mean, I don't Facebook myself, but my market assistant does, and when she gets up with us next Wednesday, she'll be responsible for that, setting up Facebook pages, too. Interviewing vendors, that type of thing. We really want the traffic to slow down and catch their eye and keep going safely. We don't want to cause an accident or anything, but we want them to turn left or right right there, whichever direction they're coming from, if they so desire.
We're doing three and six, but you're planning to have the sign out early in the morning just to let them know to come back?
I would, yes, to make them aware, yes, right. Unless, unless you guys want to limit me to hours, I don't know.
No, I think if you limit yourself to one day, I'm perfectly happy with that.
Usually, like I said, usually I go at nine o'clock, I set those little two-by-four signs out, I have plastic pipes right in the grass, they're set in, they're locked in, they're impervious to wind or rain damage, and by six o'clock, they're gone again. Charlie gives us the trailer to stall our stuff, and it's, everything's locked up. The sign would go home with me, the sign thing would go home with me, and it's off-site completely, not to be used by anybody else, so that's our promise to you.
Could, could we dress it up a little bit, like, could we put corn stalks on it or something?
Well, at that time of year, Mike, but corn isn't usually available till, this year might be August.
Yeah, yeah.
Cold, cold spring.
If it comes in at all.
My corn hasn't popped yet at all out of the ground, so we need growing temperature, ground temperature over forty degrees to do that, so we just haven't seen that.
So when you talk about getting one from an auction, do you have one in mind? Has already got?
I've seen them, I go to construction auctions all the time, I was in the state of Vermont Mother's Day weekend, I could have bought one for two hundred and fifty dollars, they had two, but I didn't, and permission, you know.
If you got one, could you arrange to have it painted white or some neutral color?
Really? I, I, we could consider it, I mean, I never.
Again, non-binding recommendations.
Of course, yes, this is all non-binding recommendations. I mean, ultimately, the board will decide to have a public hearing or not, but the result of a public hearing throughout this is that you can do what you want. I'm just trying to figure out how to make the thing look as aesthetically pleasing as possible.
If that works better for you, we would consider it, we'd consider it.
Certain of them certainly may come in colors other than, you know, highway orange.
Okay. But most of them are, you know, the industrial ones are orange, the little ones are white, and, I mean, we could change the color to make it work.
Have them paint little cows on it or something. Give it some character.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the only concern from a regulatory standpoint that I would, and I think Bob's already kind of addressed this, is these are typically changeable electronic signs. We stress and encourage you to make sure that the message doesn't change once, other than once per thirty minutes, which is the requirement for the ordinance, if it changes at all.
So by code, do you want it to blink every thirty minutes?
No, no, no.
Just permanent?
Permanent is fine.
It's supposed to be, and actually, I thought it was twenty minutes, but maybe it's.
Whatever it is, twenty, thirty minutes.
It's long enough that, so that somebody that's driving by doesn't see two messages in the usual sense of things.
Distracted by it.
Or see it change.
Place one.
Placement of it isn't too complicated, but it has to be out of the right of way, not, there's a, there's a paved, there's a striped pedestrian way across the front of that site that shouldn't be blocked with a sign.
No, that's a north entrance, so we wouldn't touch that. We'd put it right in the middle somewhere, on the edge of the grass, on the edge of pavement, wheel chuck it, make it safe. I think there's a trailer in the way right now, but that's going to be moved, I'm sure, whatever Charlie's selling there.
I don't have anything more to offer, I mean, I just think, whatever you guys can do to think about the appearance, so that it looks like it's, you know, a commercial sign. And part of the reason for that is not only for the aesthetics, but anyone that wasn't a government agency couldn't, couldn't get this passed our board, we wouldn't approve it. I don't think we have the ability to approve it. And so, it's not just that, you know, it's an unusual thing, nobody else could, could do this, and of course, as soon as somebody sees it, they're going to ask for one.
Well, you may go away in years to come, if we get enough customer base, that may go away, that sign.
Is that it, if I get, make it out there more often?
You and, you and me both, coming from the north, right?
I mean, at least for the summer, the summer market has more activity, the winter market is, is, needs, needs a little bump, I'll be honest with you, you know.
But that is an advertising, I mean, people just don't know it's there, in my opinion.
Correct.
And maybe the sign will help that, maybe Facebook or maybe, who knows?
It's all of that, I mean, it's, it's time and maintenance, you know.
So when you do it in the wintertime, what do you got available for product in the wintertime? Because I'm not thinking that there's fresh vegetables that got picked this morning.
There's some root vegetables, and there is a hydroponic guy there with fresh lettuce and kale.
How about that?
And cucumbers, hydroponically, just with water, and fish. He's there every week, and he's at the summer market, too, he's a, he's a really good creator. There's meat products, there's a candle lady, there's a baker or two. We had a gentleman doing juices and cheeses, I'm not, I'm not sure if he's coming or in transition right now, because that product needs time to build up. The O'Leary Center is really a nice spot, but nobody knows it's there. It's clean, it's safe, it's heated. That day we use is not in competition with anything else, there might be a bus trip coming back once in a blue moon, but it really doesn't interact or interfere with us. I'm not in charge of the winter thing, I oversee it, but Don Minor's really in charge of that, and he would have more particulars to say about it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, one other place in town where there's some signs of public interest to put up is that corner right by the library, they'll hang some banners up for different community functions. Have you been able to connect with them and see if they'd be willing to do that? That would be as visible as anything that you can do with a lighted sign on that corner by the library.
Well, we have little signs for the winter market, and he puts it at the edge of the cemetery across from the town hall, and he puts them on the hill on D W Highway size. But again, once the time changes, in October, end of October, it's darker, ready, and it's very limited exposure, and there are only little eighteen by eighteen signs stuck in the ground. When the ground freezes, you can't even stick them in the ground, the ground's frozen, and then with snow is even further complicated. You know, we're, we're all trying to brainstorm and trying to make it all better, make it work for them, and we thought the sign thing would do it, the big sign.
I'm trying to offer any thoughts that I can, in addition to or in substitute for the sign, however you guys choose to use the information, or maybe you've already thought about it and tried those kinds of things, I'm just trying to do my best to think of some ideas.
It is on channel twenty, you know, the winter market, and as well as summer market will be, but again, that's a different exposure, not everybody sees that. We want to get the people on the way home, especially the winter market on the way home, they can buy their meals there, they can buy their meat product there, ready to go, you know, they just don't know what's there.
I know it's there because I get the posts from Tim or wherever that, you know, they come around, I see them on Facebook and all that, it's just the same hours in the wintertime as in the summertime.
Well, the winter market is an envious of us, because if they had three hundred people going to the O'Leary Center every Wednesday, they'd be all set. They only have a few, you know. That's the problem.
So what, do other towns do winter farmer's markets, too, or they just kind of shut it down for the winter and start?
Milford has it upstairs in the town hall, they use the elevator. Milford has it upstairs in the town hall. They use the elevator and they drag, you know, bags of onions and everything else up, 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 up the hill or up the stairs or up the elevator.
And the elevator's all right.
Yeah, um, Amherst Street, um, Lavoy Farms has a situation now where they have a winter market at the, I can't remember the name of the, where the greenhouses are across from Mallmark. Am I saying the right thing?
By the Chrome Diner, you mean? Job, near Joey's Diner?
Uh.
That area?
That area, yes, yes, thank you.
Joey's Diner area.
Um, Nashua has a Sunday. Nashua is very, very well done. And they have a big grant that powers them.
Concord's is on Saturday, right outside my office door. I didn't know that until I tried to go to work on a Saturday.
Concord's a brilliant market, you know? You know, if, you guys should look into the fresh vegetables. It's great for your health and.
Oh, I don't question it. I, I have no doubt at all and I, I love to cook and I love food and I would have no doubt at all that I'd buy stuff if I would get there. I just can't get there during those hours. I mean, I'd have to take.
They have CSAs too, Community Support Agriculture. Just stop and pick up a box on the way home. And it's all, the whole product of the farm, every week, CSA's. So, it's another option available from a farmer's market.
So, the ultimate question that you're here for is whether we should have a public hearing about all the things that we just talked about. And it's pretty much, we just did have a public hearing, even though it wasn't totally.
There was no public.
But, but my impression is that there isn't a, a, a purpose or benefit to be gained from.
I can't imagine a benefit, no. For, for once a week. I think if you were saying you wanted to put a sign out every day of the week or something like that, that, that we'd be more inclined, I'd be more inclined to suggest we should have a public hearing. See if people are gonna object to that. But I think that for the eighteen Wednesdays, for the summer market, I, I have no problem with what you're going forward with. Thank you.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, I was just gonna ask for that.
Do you want a motion?
All right. I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that this matter should not be put on, as an agenda item before the planning board.
Is there a second? Is there a second by Mike?
On the basis. I will basically reword that in the minutes and review the results to say that Mr. Milens made a motion to not require a public hearing under RSA six seventy-four fifty-four and it was seconded by Mr. Reddick.
That's pretty much exactly what he said.
That's what I said. Thank you, thank you for translating it.
Before we vote, and I, I have little doubt the outcome of the vote, um, do please think about the aesthetics of it and trying to make it look and sit right. And Mike's suggestion, I think, is somewhat tongue in cheek in terms of decorating it, but I, I don't think that it would be out of place if the thing was decorated up, you know, for the season.
Cornstalks are antique white. What do you think?
Couple, a couple of trees are, a tree's hanging off of it.
Okay.
You know, just like the, the, um.
Well, like they do with the, um, some of the, some of the wireless telephone masks, they have these tree looking things.
The DPW has all the trash cans painted like cows, you know, it's just.
Yes.
I think that's a stick on thing, isn't it?
All right, so get one. Stick it on your.
I, I have one other question. Uh, if town council asked, uh, is there any good faith coming from this board? If I go to town council after this?
And say, does the planning board support this?
Yes.
I think that, yeah, from, from my point of view, and we'll see if it's the consensus of the board, um, my support for the farmer's market is unconditional. And if this is what you need, then.
Go for it.
We can go, we can go with it. Um, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So, no public hearing. Um, you've gotten the best we can offer for some input. And I hope that you, um, make it beautiful. Make it look good.
Thank you so much. You all have a good night.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Very much indeed.
With that, I think we'll go back to item five on our agenda, wherever my agenda is, and let Tim have a shot at telling us about some stuff.
One minute, because one of my colleagues was hospitalized today.
Oh, please do. Please go check on him.
Can we take a short break? Would that be okay?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take five minutes and use restrooms or whatever anybody else might need. Fortunately. All right. Okay, let's come back from our recess and re-uh, join the meeting. Tim, um, you're up on our agenda to talk about our two thousand and thirteen master plan implementation, um, steps. And specifically, some steps aimed at looking at mixed use development along the DW Highway corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, two months ago now, I think was the last time I had done my initial, uh, presentation regarding mixed use development strategies. At that time, I think the board direction to me was, let's look at this from a big picture idea of looking at it as an overlay district of some sort and concentrating it along the DW corridor and those areas non-residentially zoned with water and sewer. So, you have in your packet a eleven by seventeen zoning map with highlighted areas along the DW corridor or just outside the DW corridor that have access to water and sewer and are non-residentially zoned, as well as a couple of blowups, just so you can see it at a slightly larger scale, eight and a half by eleven. Uh, so what I was hoping is that this would start the discussion a little bit in terms of which of these areas, if all, some of, partial portions of, would the board wanna consider for locations for a mixed use overlay district that would allow for mixing of uses in these areas? I purposely left out Anheuser-Busch, uh, cause I frankly, I don't see that redevelop, I hope we don't have to redevelop that anytime soon, uh, given the investment that the company's making into it right now.
Good investment, yeah, sorry.
Uh, but I did, it, it, because this has no rhyme or reason, I did include Merrimack Premium Outlets, uh, because it was just a contiguous shape. BAE is, uh, I did not include the Fidelity Campus as well, uh, because primarily that's not accessed off of DW, that's off of Continental Boulevard. But essentially, we've got the area, the southern core, the southern industrially zoned section of DW with the exception of Anheuser-Busch. And the exception of the Penn and Chuck and uh, Southwood, Southwood Corp, buffer lands for the water supply. I've got Merrimack Premium Outlets. You've got that stretch of Continental Boulevard from uh, Greeley Street, uh, towards Atria Medical. You've got the Executive Park Drive area off of uh, Amherst Street, Amherst Road, I should say. You've got the area near the town center, roughly from Railroad Ave to Right Ave. Uh, and then to the northern part of the corridor, you've got essentially, uh, from, um, Crosswoods Path, south along DW, uh, coming towards Twin Bridge Road.
So, um, thank you for doing this. This helps. Um, my, starting at the southern point on DW Highway, that first one has got the, um, Edgebrook.
Correct.
Project in it, which is a mixed use that's been initiated with some variances, but.
Still, still in some sort of limbo, but we'll be back at some point.
Yeah, no question, but it's already an area where there is a mixed use development that's gone forward with some variances. Across the street is Harris Pond, which is kind of mixed use with some commercial with the residential behind it. And so, I think that that general area is perfectly suited for this kind of a consideration, as far as I'm concerned. Um, I don't mind that there, I don't mind if it happened to be industrial development instead, but um, I, I think that the right projects could fit in there and work, work fine. Merrimack Premium Outlets is a mixed use development, and so I have no problem with that, that sort of being, being designated that. And they've actually proposed it again for the lower lot and, um, so I don't have any problem with that one. The one across the highway from Premium Outlets, I'm just having a hard time sort of imagining what part of town that is and what.
It's Star Drive. You got, uh, former GT, now spraying systems in there.
GT Solar and.
Kohlsmann's in there, Elbit Systems, uh, that area, it's basically from Industrial Drive north to, oh, what was that?
Yeah.
Karen Street.
Okay. What do you guys think about that one? I don't really have any strong feelings one way or another, whether that's got pretty well-developed industrial properties already or whether that's worth thinking about.
Well, we've, we've, Mr. Chairman, we have recently had the application to increase something down the far end of Star Drive. They were doing stones and now this.
Yeah, those, uh, not last meeting, it actually was last meeting.
Yes. Yeah, the plastic artificial siding.
I mean, in my view, that area, Star Drive area is uns, is, is fairly heavily industrialized already. I don't really see how you, people would.
Mix it up with residential.
I don't see you wanna mix it up. I, I would leave that as a purely industrial in my book.
If I've got consensus, no problem from my end.
That one's, would be my thought.
Kohlsmann as well, or keep Kohlsmann?
Kohlsmann comes up every couple of years as a.
Because they have that front, they have that front parcel with the athletic fields.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll eliminate the area north of, uh, Anheuser-Busch.
Yeah, but the Kohlsmann stuff can be.
Yeah, cause coal recycling's over there too. We don't want anything that's coal, so.
Okay, uh, the Continental Boulevard and area up through Amherst Street and Executive Park Drive, um, seems fine to me to.
That's, that definitely.
Yeah. Executive Park, really, especially if they.
If that second one comes off, that's great.
Yep. Uh, then the next one up, uh, Right Ave.
That's Columbia Circle, Right Ave. A lot of that's floodplain. It's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
So, some of the stuff like up on Columbia Circle or down Railroad Ave, I don't necessarily think would be, but on DW Highway along that area, I wouldn't have any problem if somebody came up with something creative.
That's that EPA side, isn't it?
I was gonna say the EPA side.
Chemicals in there. Oh, yeah.
Yes, you've got the EPA in there. Between Railroad Ave and Right Ave, you've had the cleanup area.
Yeah, there's a huge site that's not, not accessible.
Mm-hmm. I know. Like I said, this was purely an exercise of, does it have water and sewer and the right zoning?
Oh, okay.
That's why it's in front of you. It's for you guys to eliminate it, so I'm not the one illuminating it before I put it up for public discussion.
Okay.
So, I can take that one out.
Yeah, out. And then the, the northernmost one.
I think that's a great site.
Yeah. That includes Flatley in there.
It does include Flatley.
That, that mine is a great site.
So, we've got the Tractor Supply.
Yep.
Right? We've got the Pinebergs over there, right?
Um.
No, not way up.
Not that far up. This is just to the north of that, starting on the, uh, the west side of DW. It's in, the area in between DW and the Turnpike for the majority of it, until you get up by, uh, the Flatley Site. Cause really, the Flatley Site is the only thing on that side of the road that has any kind of size and non-residential zoning currently. And then you, the sewer line stops when you get up by, uh, the residential development up there. But that's Webster Green or which one that is, the very northern part there.
I think Tractor Supply and all that stuff is in that green shaded area.
That's in the town center area.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about the Pineberg, the one across the street, Twin Bridge?
It's a gray area, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it has, no.
I mean, that's, oh, that's where the post office is. Pineberg is further, further south in the green area.
All right, you see where Twin Bridge is, right across the street from there, but that whole gray wedge, right, could.
That gray wedge could be included. It's, it's not a huge space, but I can certainly expand to include that.
Wouldn't be bad to see that site redeveloped. It's a beautiful.
Tough one.
You're talking about that property between the post office and Pineberg that belongs to the town slash library?
No, I didn't know that. Where are we talking?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Right next to the post office and between Pineberg and the post office, there's a, there's a track of land the town owns theoretically for the library.
Oh, I just figured it was part of Pineberg, yeah.
No, they sold it to the town some time ago.
That might be the reason why I left it out, actually. I know some reason, so.
Yeah.
I'll leave that.
It's not private property.
Yeah, definitely owned by the town. We bought it from Pineberg.
All right, so that leaves us with that northern strip, the Continental, Amherst, Continental and Executive Park area, uh, the Merrimack Premium Outlet area, and then Kohlsmann's south.
Yes. One other thing, just to comment on, sort of unrelated, but it occurred to me as I was looking at the map. Um, our town sidewalk map includes all of, of Fidelity's internal sidewalks as town sidewalks.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I noticed that one day when I was looking at it. I'm like, what the heck? It's all spaghetti sidewalks down there.
All right. So, that, that satisfies the first thing I was hoping to accomplish here tonight. Uh, secondly is really now that we, we have a rough idea as to where we wanna do this. Back in April, you had indicated that a conditional use permit process, similar to the way we handle them currently in the industrials district, was the preferred alternative. But the board wanted to differentiate between greenfield development and redevelopment parcels and perhaps having different criteria to evaluate if it's a redevelopment project versus a greenfield project. So, I don't need you to do so tonight, but I would encourage you, and I'll be sending out an email to the other members who aren't here tonight, to start brainstorming ideas as to what types of things you would like to see included as being allowed in both of those situations and the types of criteria that you'd like to review these and base your decision-making on. Doesn't have to be terribly detailed, but just brief, broad concepts as to exactly what do you think it should be that we're evaluating to make a decision on these types of projects. So that when I have that, and now I have the areas, then I can start getting into the actual hardcore drafting of the ordinance language itself.
Okay. Certainly glad to think about it. Uh, in terms of the redevelopment, what you've always seems to pop into my mind or occur to me is making it compact, de-emphasizing vehicular traffic. So, putting the parking in the back, um, focusing on its, um, visual appeal from the street, streetscapes, those kinds of things, um, over, you know, big square building in the back of a parking lot.
Exactly. I think the other, the other thing I would think is, is I'm casting my mind back to the OEP presentation on, um, improvements of, of areas. They, they put out a paper, which I retained at home, and I'll try and look at some of that, because some of that was, 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 if you like, redevelopment plans for various towns and it was quite good. I'll look it up.
I think for the re, so on, on greenfield developments, I think you can master plan a facility because you've got twenty acres or fifty acres or something to think about. But if you're talking about doing mixed use development on a redevelopment scale of one or two buildings or an acre or two, I don't think that you would theme that acre. But it may be that the default theme is New England Town Center or something that is, will, will by default be in common if you end up with three or four of these things somewhere down the road, that they would relate to each other because they're tied to a common theme.
Correct.
Um, if that makes sense.
That does. So, I will shoot out an email within the next day or so and basically ask the people, ask you to individually, without replying all, so that we don't end it up in a ninety-one A situation. And I'll put that specifically in the email, um, to give me your thoughts and ideas. And then, uh, I would request that you give me probably, ah, second meeting of August or first meeting of September, I could have a first draft.
Certainly sounds fine to me. Um, whatever you've sent out requesting input, give some bold, red, large letter guidelines in terms of dates that you want a response by, so that people will pay attention to those.
Yep. Okay. That also gives, not only, it gives me the time I need to get the information and start doing drafting. Uh, also allows you to then work on the, the sidewalk pedestrian things that I know you discussed at the last meeting, uh, is getting that back going with the NRPC process. So, I, I think it makes, it's better use of the board's time to start working that thing now, while I'm working in the background on a rough draft and first draft. And then we can get into the back and forth and workshops on ordinance language, once we've got that moving.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Anything else?
That's all I had.
That's a nice painless presentation. Let's see if I've got an agenda here. Um, we did take up item six in order to hear from Bob, but I didn't open up the floor to see if there was any other discussion, action, or discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern for many members of the board. Seeing none, we'll move beyond that to the approval of the minutes of May sixteenth, twenty seventeen. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as printed.
So, motion to approve the minutes of May sixteen, twenty seventeen as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Koenig. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of May sixteenth, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to conduct that bit of business. And that brings us to our eighth item on the agenda, which is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded by, seconded by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We are adjourned. Don't forget to turn your microphones on.